Permission meeting for May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing in its one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Here.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Weiner.
Here.
Commissioner McBride.
Here.
Commissioner Yoder.
Here.
Chair Whitliff.
Here. Thank you.
Approval of agenda, at this time the planning commission may approve the May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, public hearing agenda. Is there a motion? Second by Bob. Discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Approval of minutes? There are no minutes to approve.
No.
Public hearing. Public hearing for the marijuana proposed amendment to Article Two, Article Three, Article eighteen, and Article twenty. Will we open? Is it open now?
Take a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Close your meeting. Take a motion to close the public hearing. Yeah, do a motion.
Like a motion to open the meeting?
Close our, open by hearing.
Second.
Second. Motion by Bob, second by Roger. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. And before we open the public hearing, or start the public hearing, I just want to read line six. Public comment on agenda-related items, all comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium will go through the chair. Also, there will not be any interaction between the podium and audience. If these rules cannot be followed, the chair can terminate this portion of the meeting. Thank you. And, ready? Open? Yep.
You're prepared to hear comments from the public regarding the proposed zoning ordinance amendments pertaining to recreational marijuana, as well as specific amendments pertaining to provisioning centers for medical marijuana. We have received a number of letters relating to this agenda item and public comp, or public hearing. If you would like me to read those into the record for the public hearing, I can do that at this time, or we can take comments from the public and I can read in the correspondence following the public comments that are present here this evening.
What would be the choice of the?
Doctor.
Actor.
I'd rather hear the public college first.
Okay, alright. Alright. So if anybody would like to speak for or against, please come forward to the podium, name an address, and you have up to five minutes.
Hi. My name is Bob Melkey. My address is thirty-six ten Chippewa Highway, Manistee, Michigan. And I come to, before you guys, to have you consider, I have a piece of property on ninety-one Arthur Street. It's not in the overlay zone. And I'm asking to request, I don't know if you guys got this little flyer I sent, okay. Requesting if you would put it in the overlay zone. It's easily to be, it's an easy piece of property to police. There's a full three sixty view, but the only problem is, it's on other side of the road, on your layout. So that's what I'm requesting, see if you could put the ninety-one Arthur Street in the zone. Overlay zone.
Alright. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. How are you? Keith Slawinski, five-eight-three-oh, Eight Mile Road, Oneakuma, Michigan. And I stand before you in full support of this ordinance. Me and my associates have currently have the old Stefano's building under contract. And I just, you know, when I express my full support, and I suggest that, you know, Manistee is a tight-knit community, and I would suggest that maybe in the application process, maybe a merit-based system, so, you know, we have a little bit more of a say on who is in and who is not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Public hearing's closed.
Let me read the correspondence in during the public hearing.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Read the letter.
A little ahead of myself.
Bear with me here, we got a few of these. Okay, the first is from Bruce Matthews, and I just had the, let's see here. Bruce and Julie Matthews, sixty-three Arthur Street. Dear Mr. Carson, a Manistee City Council. We live between the curves at sixty-three Arthur Street, Manistee. We are against a proposed zoning for marijuana sales overlay district, MSO. We are not against marijuana businesses, however, there has to be a better location for them. The proposed district is on a busy US thirty-one. Driver's entrance and exit to a marijuana sales business, businesses will be made difficult by the poor visibility of oncoming traffic due to the close proximity of curves. Drivers impaired by alcohol from Chapo's Northside Bar and weed from the marijuana stores increase the danger to other drivers due to reduced sight distances, volume of seasonal traffic, and speed of vehicles. We notice illegal to drive impaired, but it frequently happens. If another substance is added to speeding cars, this will result in more accidents in front of our drive and others on the curves. For safety reasons, we oppose the proposed zoning. Thank you, and they do have their signatures. To Manistee County Planning Department. This is Dan and Gail Slawinski, thirty-five Arthur Street. As the owner within three hundred feet of a parcel within the city of Manistee being considered for zoning amendment, we wanted to state our strong concern for this change and our vote, which would be no. Our reasoning is as follows. One, we do not want this near families and children. Multiple waterfront residences and vacation properties are near this area that's proposed. There are plenty of other areas in Manistee that could be considered that are away from multiple residence waterfront properties in the main highway in and out of Manistee. Some things to consider when thinking about having these types of properties around children. Aside from the top concern involving drivers under the influence, some parents also worried, also worried about the possibility of a child finding and ingesting edible marijuana inadvertently left behind by a dispensary customer, and teens having easier opportunities accessing marijuana. Other dispensary concerns included setting a bad example for kids and bringing violent crime to the area, and they have a web link. Marijuana is still, number two, marijuana is still legal under federal law and can impact local industry and jobs. Passing proposal one did not change federal law. Marijuana is still Schedule One drug. Legalization does not require an employer to permit or accommodate marijuana in the workplace. Work in manufacturing, heavy machinery, transportation, other jobs. Legalization complicates an employer's responsibility to maintain a safe work environment, with another link. We will having local pot shops attract industry and other high-paying jobs to the area. We think no. Number three, costs related to public safety and healthcare. States that have legalized marijuana and looked forward to the pot revenue have also seen a negative impact of the following. Cost of increased law enforcement, drug driving incidents, fatal crashes, loss of productivity, and a huge spike in gang-related crime bring into question the cost benefit of those dollars, with a link. When states enact laws legalizing marijuana, highway safety is typically not a primary focus. However, these law changes lead to many impacts on the DWI system and unanticipated costs such as increases in law enforcement prosecution, prosecution, court resources, toxicology, lab results, and testimony. Impact of legalization, decriminalization of marijuana on the DWI system, and there's another link. What is the cost benefit to us as residents? We do not see one in question the impact to our safety on the road. Number four portrays a negative or unfavorable image of the US thirty-one corridor. After reviewing the US thirty-one corridor management plan, the area of interest rezoned looks like it was originally designated as the marine mixed-use district, with the district planned to be focused on marine activities, ancillary, commercial uses, and high-density residential. This addition of these type of storefronts do not seem to be an aesthetic improvement. We do not want to see signs with green neon, green crosses, floodlights, et cetera, up and down the highway. The report also noted the following. US thirty-one serves as the key north-south transportation corridor for moving significant traffic between the four local communities, as well as many other communities along the western side of Michigan. The visual characteristics of a corridor provide a first impression of visitors, pass-through traffic, and for those who live near it who form positive and/or negative opinions about an area which in turn influence decisions of whether they will return in the future, and if so, how often and for how long. The statement is so true, and is one of the reasons we decided to purchase a residence in Manistee. We ask the questions, our pot shops, what we really want people to see as they enter and exit Manistee. It does not leave a very favorable impression for a lot of people, and our response as resident in the area is no. We do not want to see these as we exit the area, drive to the store, or look out our windows. Our opinion and feedback. My wife and I are both professionals, plan to retire in Manistee. Hence our reason for buying property in the city of Manistee fourteen years ago. Marijuana use is legal at a state level but not a federal level. As a condition of our employment and any other, many other employers in the state, individuals must remain drug-free. Because of this, the outlined opportunity in the area of Manistee does not provide a benefit from our perspective. It's only a downfall for the area. Since it's legal in the state of Michigan, we do not understand that, understand that cities may want to take, we do understand that cities may want to take advantage of the perceived opportunity. Our thought is for Manistee to take a similar approach to how other Michigan cities or cities in other states are approaching adding these businesses to their municipalities. The approach by other cities has been to focus on adding these types of businesses to either industrial or highly commercial areas. Other cities have repurposed industrial areas that are vacant, or have blended the lifestyle to the commercial areas with restaurants and service in hopes of bolstering incomes of business. That said, what most municipalities are trying to avoid is allowing these establishments to take root in areas in proximity of schools, daycares, parks, and highly populated residential areas. Last we checked, the proposed zone is in close proximity to two different condo associations, dense family population, a public fishing dock, family gathering park, a campground, family gathering park, and a museum, family gathering. In our opinion, this is not the area these types of businesses should be taking root. There are other areas in Manistee to leverage and strongly recommend those areas be considered if the city decides this is a wise decision. As stated previously, our vote is no for this to be approved along the area outlined in the proposal. We'd also vote for Manistee to abstain from approving businesses like this until more years of data are collected. This type of decision to allow controversial business, though legal, should be data-driven and not made based on the ideal of possible tax revenue that can be acquired. Proposal one was passed hastily with little thought given to the overall consequences, impact on safety, law enforcement, federal banking regulations, et cetera, along with management of the proposal. More legislation should and will be, in our opinion, forthcoming. Just because Manistee chooses to opt out now does not mean it cannot opt in at a later date when more concrete data is available. Thank you for reviewing and considering our comments of this proposed zoning change, and they have signature. This is from Daniel Meisner, one sixty-five Jaws and Cove Drive. Dear sir, as a property owner of a lakefront condo within three hundred feet of the proposed marijuana sales facility, I'm opposed to the zoning amendment. I love my location on Jaws and Cove and spending my summers in Manistee. I'm opposed to the rezoning to allow in this area for several reasons outlined below. One, summer traffic is already congested along the stretch of US thirty-one Arthur Street. Jaws and Cove residents and Manistee motel customers have a hard time entering into traffic here because of the speed of the traffic and limited visibility as we enter on a fart, on a fairly sharp curve. Anything that increases traffic in this area is a bad idea. Colorado has learned with legalization of marijuana, there is the unintended consequence of increased illegal marijuana sales in the same areas. We don't want more illegal drug activity in our community. Three, medical marijuana cards have pretty much become a farce. Anyone who wants one can find a doctor who'll accommodate their request. Although it may offer some patients pain relief, the vast majority of people with medical marijuana cards really don't require relief from pain and suffering. It's simply an attempt to bypass marijuana laws. Four, in areas where marijuana is sold, there's a big increase in the number of people driving under the influence. The traffic problems in this area are already bad enough without adding a large number of impaired drivers to the mix. This is a real and serious danger. Five, federal law still considers marijuana to be controlled substance. This is the issue of federal enforcement of the law being in conflict with the city. Because of the federal government position, those who sell marijuana run an all-cash business to keep their bank accounts from being seized by federal authorities. This all-cash business is a target for thieves, organized crime, and money laundering. We do not want to bring that element to our beautiful small town. Six, it will require an increase to the police department to manage all the increased illegal activity that is associated with selling marijuana. I don't want my taxes to increase to cover the cost of policing marijuana sales that support more illegal activity. The benefit to the city and tax revenue form, it should be from a sales location, is small compared to the cost and harm to the community. Seven, that proposed marijuana sales facility is right by the Manistee motel. That motel will become a rent-by-the-day drug house. Please don't do this to us. With drugs comes the drug problems. It's not worth it. Daniel Meiser, one sixty-five Jaws and Cove Drive. And we have signature. Let me close a couple of these, I think this is vice legging. Dave and Lisa Sweeney, sixty-five Arthur Street. Dear council, my wife and I live at sixty-five Arthur Strit, Street. We are against a proposed zoning for marijuana sales across the street from our home. We are not against marijuana stores in general but have reservations with marijuana sales being zoned so close to homes. Why not put the dispensaries in the industrial park where there are no homes? Another concern is the traffic in this particular area. There are S-curves north and south of the zoned area on US thirty-one. Currently, the traffic is difficult enough, and to increase the traffic flow with marijuana stores will only be problematic. For safety and home values, we oppose the location of the zoning amendment. Thank you. And we don't have signature, but they'd have their names on there. Two, this is from Galen and Pamela Hall. To planning commission, we have no problem with marijuana sales overlay district zoning amendment map amendment. Any effort to bring business to Manistee is a welcome improvement, respectfully. Galen and Pamela Hall, fifty-nine Arthur Street. And we have signature. Jim Henderson, fifty-seven Arthur Street. Dear Mr. Carson, I am writing a response to your letter, date April twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, at which time you informed us of the proposed amendment to establish a marijuana sales overlay district to allow the sales of medical and recreational marijuana. I would assume that there are a number of people in these condo units who are concerned about how this rezoning would affect our area when it comes to crime, traffic, and property values. I plan on coming to your meeting on the sixteenth and would hope to find out the answers to a couple of questions. First, what other properties were considered when it was decided to go after this rezoning? And second, is there any information or studies that have been done that shows how a rezoning of this nature affects the area? Personally, I would think that placing facilities such as this on the outskirts of town, or even in an industrial park, might be a more logical approach and not be a negative to our citizens. We have a tremendous amount of traffic in this area and a bar, where I am assuming we already have drivers who are under some degree of influence. I hope that you understand that this could pose a significant problem. As of right now, I am totally opposed, should be opposed, to this attempt to rezone this district for the purpose mentioned in your letter. Not sure why it has to be here when there are probably a number of areas that would be better suited. I look forward to finding out more at the upcoming meeting. Jim Henderson, fifty-seven Arthur Street. Stephanie M. Wood. And fifty-three Arthur Street. Dear Manistee County Planning Commission, as an owner of one of the condominium condo units across the street from the marijuana sales overlay district, please accept this letter as my official request that the planning commission decline to adopt the proposed zoning amendment. This proposed amendment is a terrible idea for this area, the city, and county of Manistee. It is probably a terrible idea for any area, but this is not an issue. The issue is this specific area, which, while it is a business area on the west side of US thirty-one Arthur Street, it is also a residential area. I have always felt extremely safe at or around my condo and hope that will not change anytime soon. As a single woman, I take my safety extremely seriously. As this recreational marijuana legislation is new to the state of Michigan, we have no idea what kinds of people run these businesses and what kinds of customers these businesses attract. Your April twenty-sixth letter states that there would be several types of regulations as to, as to can, I think, who can own such a business. But as this is a new industry, how would the city and the county know who they should or should not allow to own, operate such a business? Very few, if any, applicants would have any references that relate to this type of business unless they came from out of state, which would beg the question, why would people leave another state to move to Manistee, Michigan, to open a new marijuana business? We would not know that answer, but we would have to consider that one reason would be that they caused so much trouble, the previous city or county wanted them out. If that were the case, why would we want them in Manistee? Some would argue that there is a large untapped market in the marijuana business. If that is the case, then there's no hurry to be one of the first areas to license marijuana. Other cities and counties can go first, and there would still be plenty of opportunity for Manistee after them. There's no need for Manistee to, to be first. It is much more important to be right if this is, in fact, an opportunity Manistee should pursue. Chances are, you will find out from other places that allowing this is something the other cities and counties regretted doing. Isn't it better that it happens somewhere else rather than in Manistee? Moving on to the regulatory measures you mentioned in your letter, you state that you would require these business owners to take security, odor, and other measures as a condition of their business operations. What do the city and county have in mind for rule, rules enforcement? For example, how much odor or air pollution do these businesses have to emit before you will take action? I assume that you allow at least some odor to emit from these businesses. In that case, all of the surrounding neighbors will have to breathe in marijuana instead of fresh Lake Michigan air. I fail to see any upside to allowing any kind of air pollution. What is the plan if the businesses fail to comply with the regulations? Pollution is not normally something that can be undone. You could shut them down for excess pollution, but that doesn't fix the already contaminated air. Finally, as I stated earlier, I take my safety very seriously. If you allow this amendment, there's no telling who will be coming into my area of town, and that is not a good feeling. Someone might say that the west side of Arthur Street is a commercial area and thus bringing customers into the area now, and that person would be correct. However, I would counter that by saying that the people who come into the area to patronize the current businesses are generally locals, who want to visit, buy fishing tackle, rent equipment, repair glass, or have lunch. Is there a large local market for marijuana purchase in the Manistee area? Well, I don't know everyone in town. I've yet to hear from anyone that he/she is desperate to have a place to buy this product. Maybe that's just a credit to the people in my social circle, and if so, I have no desire to expand my circle to the kinds of people who want to purchase marijuana within shouting distance of my home. I urge the planning commission to do the right thing and leave the zoning just as it is now. We have a safe community with good neighbors and clean air, and we need to keep it that way. Stephanie M. Wood. It is signed, and fifty-three Arthur Street. And that is the final piece of correspondence. Chair Whitliff.
Thank you. New business?
For old business, would you like me to read the zoning ordinance amendment language into the record?
Yes. If you want to take a drink, go ahead.
Should have brought some water.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna skip this first part. This is the actual amending ordinance that would be adopted by council. So this, this just lays out the articles and the amendments or revisions to specific sections, so I'm gonna just skip to the actual ordinance language. Section one, amend Article Two, Section two-fourteen, and by adding marijuana provisioning center. A licensed commercial business that sells medical marijuana under the authority of the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, Act two-eighty-one of two thousand sixteen. Marijuana grower establishment means a person licensed to cultivate marijuana and sell, or otherwise transfer marijuana to marijuana establishments. Marijuana safety compliance establishment means a person licensed to test marijuana, including certification for potency and the presence of contaminants. Marijuana processor establishment means a person licensed to obtain marijuana from marijuana establishments and to sell or otherwise process and package marijuana, and sell or otherwise transfer marijuana to marijuana establishments. Marijuana micro-business establishment means a person licensed to cultivate not more than a hundred-and-fifty marijuana plants, process and package marijuana, and sell or otherwise transfer marijuana to individuals who are twenty-one years of age or older, or to marijuana safety compliance facility, but not to other marijuana establishments. Marijuana retailer means a person licensed to obtain marijuana from marijuana establishments and to sell or otherwise transfer marijuana to marijuana establishments and to individuals who are twenty-one years of age or older. Marijuana secure transporter establishment means a person licensed to obtain marijuana from marijuana establishments in order to transfer marijuana to marijuana establishments. Amend Article Two, Section two-seventeen P, by adding person. As used in reference to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act means an individual corporation, thank you, limited liability company, partnership of any kind, trust, or other legal entity. Amend Article Three, Section three-hundred D, overlays by adding marijuana sales overlay district. Amend Article Three, Section three-oh-one zoning map subsection C and E by adding marijuana sales overlay district boundary to the zoning map. Amend Article Three, Table three-dash-two by adding MSO, marijuana sales overlay district, and you'll see that on the far right of the screen, right there. And adding the uses of marijuana grower establishments, marijuana safety compliance establishment, marijuana processor establishment, marijuana micro-business establishment, marijuana retailer establishment, marijuana secure transporter establishment, marijuana provisioning center facility. And you'll see where the marijuana grower establishment is added right here, and then it gives it as a special use in the Peninsula District, the C-one District, and the L-one District, and the, the G, or excuse me, the LI District, and the GI District. And you see continuing on to the table, and I'm just gonna go down with everything that's in red right here. So you have the marijuana safety compliance establishment as a special use permit. You have the marijuana processor establishment, marijuana micro-business establishment, marijuana retailer establishment, marijuana secure transporter establishment, marijuana provisioning center facility. Amend Article eighteen, Section eighteen-fifty-one B, regulations and conditions by adding, and the new, the new text is read, a marijuana grower, marijuana processor, marijuana secure transporter, crossing out and, marijuana safety compliance facility, and marijuana provisioning center in accordance with the provisions of state law may be permitted through the issuance of a special use permit pursuant to Article eighteen standards and requirements for special uses provided that. And then amending subsection two. The new language is in red. Marijuana growers and marijuana processors. Item A. Three. Three, the filtration system shall be maintained in working order and shall be in use. The filter shall be changed upon manufacturer's recommendation or a minimum of once every three-hundred-sixty-five days, whichever occurs first. Amend Article eighteen, Section eighteen-fifty-one by adding subsection five as outlined below. Marijuana provisioning center. Marijuana provisioning center shall be subject to the following standards. A, hours of operation. Hours of operation shall be between the hours of ten AM and eight PM during any day of the week. B, patrons, customers, clients. No one under the age of twenty-one should be permitted within the establishment buildings. C, use, consumption of marijuana products. No use or consumption of marijuana or marijuana products may be conducted within the establishment building or on the premises. D, sale of marijuana and marijuana products. Marijuana and marijuana products may only be sold within the establishment building. E, delivery of marijuana and marijuana products. All deliveries, transfer of marijuana and marijuana products must occur within the establishment building. F, signage. Refer to the signed standards contained within Article twenty marijuana sales overlay district. And we'll get to that a little bit here. G, parking. All off-street parking shall be in compliance with the section of five-fourteen of this ordinance. H, landscaping. Landscaping and buffering shall be provided in accordance with section five-thirty-one of this ordinance. I, exterior lighting. All exterior lighting shall be in accordance with section five-twenty-five of this ordinance. of this ordinance. And amend Article eighteen by changing section eighteen fifty-two to marijuana establishments and adding the following regulations. A, definition. Marijuana establishments means an enterprise at a specific location at which a license is licensed to, a licensee is licensed to operate under the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCL three 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 point two seven nine five one, including marijuana grower, marijuana safety compliance, marijuana processor, marijuana microbusiness, marijuana retailer, or marijuana secure transporter. B, regulations and conditions. A marijuana grower, marijuana processor, marijuana safety compliance, marijuana retailer, marijuana microbusiness, and marijuana secure transporter may be permitted through the issuance of a special use permit in certain districts pursuant to Article eighteen standards and requirements for special uses, provided that, A, in the PD Peninsula District, marijuana grower, marijuana processor, marijuana safety compliance, and marijuana secure transporter shall be permitted only as a part of a mixed-use building or development in which no more than forty-nine percent of the combined floor area of any building or buildings within the development are utilized and shall be further regulated by, by the provisions of Article, of section eighteen fifty-eight. At the time, B, at the time of application for a special use permit, the marijuana establishment must be licensed by the state of Michigan and then must be at all times in compliance with the laws of the state of Michigan, including but not limited to the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCL three 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 point two seven nine five one, and all other applicable rules promulgated by the state of Michigan. C, the use of establishment must at all times be in compliance with chapter eight six seven, recreational marijuana establishments, and all other applicable laws and ordinances of the city of Manistee. D, a marijuana establishment or activities associated with the license growing, processing, testing, transporting, or sales marijuana may not be permitted as a home business or accessory use, nor may they include accessory uses except as otherwise provided in this ordinance. Two, marijuana growers, marijuana processors, and marijuana microbusinesses. Marijuana growers, marijuana processors, and marijuana microbusinesses shall be subject to the following standards. A, odor. As used in this subsection, building means the building or portion thereof used for marijuana production or marijuana processing. One, the building shall be equipped with an activated carbon filtration system for odor control to ensure that air leaving the building through an exhaust vent first passes through an activated carbon filter. Two, the filtration system shall consist of one or more fans and activated carbon filters. At a minimum, the fan shall be sized for cubic feet per minute, CFM, equivalent to the volume of the building, length multiplied by width multiplied by height divided by three. The filter shall be rated for the applicable CFM. Three, the filtration system shall be maintained in working order and shall be in use. The filter shall be changed upon manufacturer's recommendation or a minimum of once every three hundred and sixty-five days, whichever occurs first. Four, negative air pressure shall be maintained inside the building. Five, doors and windows shall remain closed except for the minimum length of time needed to allow people to ingress or egress the building. Six, an alternative odor control system is permitted if the special use permit applicant submits and the municipality accepts a report by a mechanical engineer licensed in the state of Michigan, demonstrating that the alternative system will control odor as well or better than the activated carbon filtration system otherwise required. The municipality may hire an outside expert to review the alternative system design and advise as to its comparability and whether, in the opinion of the expert, it should be accepted. Item B, all off-street parking shall be in compliance with section five fourteen of this ordinance. C, landscaping and buffering shall be provided in accordance with section five three one of this zoning ordinance. D, all exterior lighting shall be in accordance with section five two five hereof. Number three, marijuana safety compliance establishment. All activities of a marijuana safety compliance establishment, including all transfers of marijuana, shall be conducted within the structure and out of public view. Four, marijuana secure transporter establishment. A marijuana secure transporter shall be subject to the special regulations and standards applicable to section eighteen eighty-nine, warehouse public uses in this ordinance. Five, marijuana retailer and marijuana microbusiness with retail uses shall be subject to the following standards. A, hours of operation. Hours of operation shall be between the hours of ten AM and eight PM during any day of the week. B, patrons, customers, clients. No one under the age of twenty-one shall be permitted within the establishment buildings. C, use consumption of marijuana products. No use or consumption of marijuana or marijuana products may be conducted within the establishment building or on the premises. D, sale of marijuana and marijuana products. Marijuana and marijuana products may only be sold within the establishment building. E, delivery of marijuana and marijuana products. All deliveries, transfer of marijuana and marijuana products must occur within the establishment building. F, marijuana microbusiness growers. All grow areas may not be viewable to the public or for publicly accessible areas of the building establishment. Two, grow areas are permitted within the same building as retail uses, but must be completely separate and separated by lock and key from retail uses. G, signage. Refer to the signed standards contained within Article twenty, marijuana sales overlay district. H, parking. All off-street parking shall be in compliance with section five fourteen of this ordinance. I, landscaping. Landscaping and buffering shall be provided in accordance with section five thirty-one of this ordinance. J, exterior lighting. All exterior lighting shall be in accordance with section five twenty-five of this ordinance. Amend Article eighteen, section eighteen fifty-three by changing to Marina and all following use regulations. Amend Article eighteen, section eighteen fifty-three by changing to medical or dental office and all following use regulations. Amend the ordinance by adding Article twenty, MSO, marijuana sales overlay district and the following standards. Article twenty, MSO, marijuana sales overlay district. Section two thousand, purpose and intent. Is the intent of this overlay district to provide a location for the sale of marijuana and marijuana infused products from licensed provisioning centers under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, MCL three 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 point two seven one zero one, or from licensed marijuana retailers or licensed marijuana microbusiness under the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MCL three 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 point two seven nine five one? Special uses to be added. Marijuana provisioning center, marijuana retailer, marijuana microbusiness. Section two zero zero one, uses permitted by right. All uses of the underlying zoning district outlined as a permitted use shall remain a permitted use allowable in this overlay district. Section two zero zero two, uses permitted by special use permit. All special uses of the underlying zoning district outlined as a special use shall remain an allowable special use in this overlay district. The following uses of buildings and land may be permitted within the MSO district as a special land use subject to the provisions of Article eighteen special use approval. A, marijuana provisioning center. B, marijuana retailer. C, marijuana microbusiness. Section two zero zero three, dimensional standards. All dimensional standards of the underlying zoning district shall apply to all lots, parcels, and structures within the overlay district. Section two zero zero four, mixed use in dwellings. Dwelling shall not be permitted in the same building structure as a marijuana business outlined in section two zero zero zero. Section two zero zero five, sign standards. These standards shall apply to all marijuana-related businesses outlined in section two zero zero zero. Sign permitting and standards shall follow the standards set forth in Article twenty-one, except the following standards shall preside within this overlay district. One, signs may not be internally illuminated. Two, no flashing, flickering, strobing, scrolling, or other changes in light intensity may occur on any portion of a sign or light that is directed at a sign. Three, no pole signs are permitted. Section two zero zero six, additional standards. A, site plan requirements subject to section two two zero three, except for upper-story dwellings, which are subject to section two two zero one point A. B, vehicular parking space access and lighting requirements subject to section five fourteen. C, landscaping requirements subject to section five thirty-one. D, dumpsters and enclosures subject to section five zero six. E, outdoor lighting requirements subject to section five two five. F, US thirty-one corridor overlay district requirements subject to Article nineteen. Okay. Parcels included in the marijuana sales overlay zone, MSO, are provided below. Parcel five one dash one seven four dash seven zero five dash zero one. Parcel five one dash one seven four dash seven zero five dash one zero. Parcel five one dash one seven four dash seven zero six dash zero one. Parcel five one dash one seven four dash seven oh seven dash oh five. Parcel five one dash one seven four dash seven zero eight dash oh five. Parcel five one dash one seven four dash seven zero eight dash oh seven. Parcel five one dash one seven four dash seven zero eight dash one one. Parcel five one dash one zero one dash two five zero dash zero one. Parcel five one dash one seven four dash seven zero eight dash one zero. Parcel five one dash one zero one dash two seven five dash zero three. Parcel five one dash one zero one dash two five zero dash zero two. Parcel five one dash one zero one dash two seven five dash zero four. Parcel five one dash one zero one dash two five zero dash zero five. Parcel five one dash one zero one dash two five zero dash zero six. Parcel five one dash one zero one dash two five zero dash zero nine. Parcel five one dash one zero one dash two five zero dash zero eight. Parcel five one dash one four six dash seven zero four dash one nine. Parcel five one dash one four six dash seven zero four dash two three. Parcel five one dash one four six dash seven zero nine dash zero seven. Parcel five one dash one four six dash seven zero nine dash zero three. Parcel five one dash one four six dash seven zero nine dash zero nine. And that completes the zoning ordinance language.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
You did it in record time.
Yeah, you did a good job. You did a good.
Could you repeat that, please?
One more time? Now, this goes to a roll vote?
Uh, yeah, well, it would go, if you want to discuss, somebody needs to make a motion, second that motion, open up discussion of the planning commission. And if you so wish, fine, then I can.
Reopen the meeting?
Yeah. Oh, yes, sir, yeah.
I make a motion. Will you reopen the meeting?
Okay. Motion to open, reopen.
Reopen.
By Shelley. Please take, roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Schemansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you. Before we go into discussion and a roll vote, I ask that the city manager and the chief of police, Cozel, would, would attend if we had any questions from, from the council or commission. So, if there's any questions?
I think we did it already, didn't we?
Well, I mean. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Who, who designated, like, the peninsula for marijuana grow and other facilities? How did that get picked and?
I, I was not working for the city of Manistee under contract at that time. Your former planning director was here, Denise Blakesley. So she would have the institutional knowledge on why that area was chosen. I can explain how the overlay was cho- well, we had the work session.
Yeah, I mean, I just wondered how that was picked and who voted to choose those certain areas and why?
I don't know, maybe. I don't know if anybody has information on that here.
That would go back to the, the medical marijuana statute that was allowed in industrial or former industrial and also areas zoned for farming. So that's where we took our guidance. And so that's why we selected the industrial
And then, uh, the peninsula because it was, um, former and also allowed for some agriculture uses.
But that's a multiple-use district, the peninsula.
Right, that, that was a recommendation, um, of Denise Blakesley, you know, that that was the best, those are the best sections to con, conform with the statute, so that's why that, those were identified. That answer your question, then?
Yeah, I just wondered in the, and, because I have delivered on those areas.
Right.
And I just wondered why, living in that area, you weren't asked your opinion or something, you know, how they change things and then everybody in a certain, footage gets to voice their opinion, it was just made up, and I just wondered who, it didn't come before us or who it went before.
It would, to change to the zoning amendment would have, would have come to the planning commission.
Yeah, there would have been a public hearing.
Right, there should have been a public hearing, so. Any other questions?
Any questions?
No, I don't have any, thank you. I mean, no, I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, I do have a question for Chief Cozel. Which was brought up in one of the letters against, um, this. Um, if somebody wants to open a meta, or marijuana, or marijuana retailing, and they're moving from out of state, do we have any, can we find a track record on them? I'm, I'm just throwing it out there because the question was, was put out there.
I think that what we're reviewing right now for the actual application, there isn't anything specific about what they have to list for, where they've come from before, it's just gonna be their, where they're living at now and their personal information. Of course, we would do a robust look into that, uh, person, that applicant to, to try to get, see if there's any type of background, to see if it would be something that, from my office, we, we deem it permissible.
Okay, all right.
Well, Ted, if I might, Mark, don't they have to go through a state, uh, permits before we even come here?
Before, before even I advise on it, I guess.
Yeah, so, I mean, that person's been checked several times, I think.
I wanted to throw that question out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a good idea.
Any, uh, any other questions?
Well, I don't know if we want to do a discussion after we make the.
Well, we, we make a motion and then discuss.
Right.
So, now, do we make a motion on Article two, three, eighteen, and twenty as separate? Or as a combined?
Nope, I would make a motion combined on the entire ordinance, um, that was presented.
Okay.
Unless you feel that you need, you would like to remove a portion of it, um, if, if you were to decide, just to explain, if you were to decide this evening that you wanted to amend the draft language, this would require another mailing and public notice, because we would have to advertise the language as being changed and revised.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would be willing to make a motion that we, uh, adopt the amendment as written and read.
Okay.
To send to council?
Second?
To recommend to council?
Yes, to recommend to council.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mark.
Okay.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Nick and second by Roger, any discussion?
Um, just, just for, for the record, there's a couple of things I just wanted to, to bring up. First of all, uh, the, the working group did look at all of the available properties in Manistee before, uh, we looked at selecting this particular area. Uh, it has a fairly low density of housing compared to other areas. Uh, there are no schools close by, which was a concern with another large open area that we had looked at as a possibility. The, uh, area, a lot of people talk about the industrial park, it is already zoned for medical marijuana, uh, for growing, uh, but there aren't any parcels available, so it's, it's kind of a moot point to make that the place for retail if there's no opportunities to purchase and buy a place to, to open up that business. Granted, it is a high-traffic area, but, um, it is also on the, the far northern corner of, it, it can't get any further out of town without being out of town. Uh, it is our, our northern boundary, uh, and it is bordered on light industrial. So when we looked at it, this was an area that was already zoned commercial, had a light industrial behind it. Uh, and one of the safety factors that works in the opposite direction is for the customers and for the owners is the high-traffic area, uh, we thought that was important as well, to be able to, uh, keep those sales in, in the open as much as possible.
Another thing we were, I remember was talking about was, uh, with it being a major highway, we've got city, county, state, tribal, all normally going up and down that road, so there's usually a patrol car fairly close in the area of one sort or another, even if it's a DNR, there's still law enforcement.
And, and, and two other points to make, one is the city of Manistee did vote fifty-eight or fifty-seven percent in favor of this legislation, uh, and part of that legislation allows individuals to grow marijuana in their home. So, uh, with or without a dispensary, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that there isn't going to be uh, marijuana available in your neighborhood, uh, at least this is legal and controlled distribution.
Any, any more discussion?
I'm good.
Please take roll.
There you go.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Stomanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Uh, yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, public comments and communication, uh, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to, uh, have, have something to say, excuse me, please approach the podium, name and address, and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Chris Jackson, uh, forty-six field due, uh, coming by way of the east side of Michigan, Pontiac in particular. Um, here with my friend and business partner Keith Zelinski, who spoke with you, uh, earlier. And so, just want to say, A, uh, certainly appreciate you, uh, passing along to council for the ordinance. Um, and there were a couple of points that, uh, may be minute, but should certainly, uh, be spoke to, I thought, from some of the letters and rejections and objections, so, uh, my partners and I, I am part owner in a fully licensed, uh, dispensary in Ypsilanti, Michigan. Uh, it's been operating since two thousand and twelve, actually, and so, uh, I say that to say, first of all, the medical marijuana has been around since two thousand and eight, uh, the statute, I should say, uh, and there has certainly been enough time for at least some sample size, if you are interested in going and doing more research, uh, based on some of the things that the folks said in the letters. Um, there are, I mean, you know, two hundred and, at least two hundred and fifty thousand in Oakland County, uh, of, of folks who have access to medical marijuana who are patients. Uh, so there's a large sample size there before recreation, if you are interested in getting more information. Uh, again, we have been operating since two thousand and twelve, and, uh, we have had zero, uh, law enforcement, uh, issues with regards to our store, and it's not to say that that's the case everywhere, uh, but in a city, uh, like most inner cities uh, across Michigan, Ypsilanti being one of them, uh, it is or used to be crime-ridden and is, uh, getting better over time, of course. Uh, but I will say that we have had zero issues with folks calling the police, uh, robberies, or anything of the like since two thousand and twelve. And so we're an example of one that's actually, uh, been okay. Um, security measures have to be taken via Michigan law, no matter what, uh, and extra precautions can be taken on behalf of, uh, the planning commission and/or city council if they want to make adjustments to ordinances as well, so, uh, that's another thing. Uh, getting rid of the black market, uh, as it stands, I think happens to, uh, planning commissioner makes points, sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, but, um, it, it happens through regulation and control, uh, and it happens through, uh, providing less opportunity for economic prosperity, and so by allowing licensed institutions to exist, that automatically takes away, in some cases, in theory, from the black market in a lot of ways, and black markets exist everywhere already, and so this, uh, and at least in our case in Ypsilanti, it hasn't done anything but help crime decrease based on the statistics. Um, as far as the feelings of individuals being against folks from out of town, who they may not know who's entering uh, into the city or running a business in their city, and to Keith's point earlier, I think that's why a merit-based system makes more sense, because then you can interview folks and see who they are, what they're about, what they bring to the table, how much experiences they have and things like that. Um, it's just for your consideration, but I think that that's how you say in a tight-knit community, you can make sure that your business community is on par with what you ultimately want to see as a community at large, and so that's another thing. Um, our goal, and I'll wrap up with this, is to be a, a good community partner. Uh, in Ypsilanti in particular, we have X amount of dollars set aside every year, particularly toward education. In that city, um, we're looking at starting an institute in Pontiac that would allow people to, uh, get access to these skill sets because it is indeed a trade, uh, and will be a trade, the extraction of growing, et cetera, uh, so that they can be positioned in some of these higher-paying, uh, jobs, but, you know, I dare not say what the city of Manistee needs particularly, and we're really interested, if we're permitted to operate in your community, to know what your community needs are and how we can contribute and, and be good neighbors, uh, so that, uh, people aren't as on edge about people just coming, making money, paying taxes, and then not contributing to the community, and trust me, being from Pontiac, uh, we have a long history of those types of things happening, so I'm really sensitive to that. Uh, and I'll end by saying, this is an opportunity so long as it's done the right way. Meetings like this, in that the council are gonna have our opportunities to make sure that the ordinance reflects what the city needs are, uh, and again, I just appreciate your time and the opportunity, and, uh, look forward to seeing you all soon, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? None, okay, we'll move on. Uh, correspondence, um, any correspondence been received in director?
No further correspondence, Chair Whitliff.
Thank you. Staff reports?
No staff report for this public hearing.
Okay. Member discussion, start with Raj, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Elaine? Pam?
I'm good.
Bob?
Nothing.
Nick? Kelly?
No.
Uh, the only thing I have is, uh, our next meeting, June sixth, I will not, I will be, I'm able to attend, so, Vice Chair Slawinski will take care of it. All right, done that. With that, motion to adjourn?
Second it.
Second? I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight, um, and comments, I appreciate it, also to staff, uh, have a great night, folks.